Well, we have the deputy chief who's here, who's sitting in the audience, who's willing to come up and comment on this. So I think we should hear it from the representative of the Los Angeles Police Department, our newest deputy chief. If you'll come forward from the police perspective and to dispel the myth that Special Order 40 is something evil that ties the hands of police when it comes to them doing their jobs to protect people of Los Angeles.
Good morning. My name is Sergio Diaz. I'm a deputy chief for the Los Angeles Police Department, the commanding officer of Operations Central Bureau. I've been designated by the department and the city attorney as a person most knowledgeable about Special Order 40. And I agree with the comments made by Councilman Zine and Councilman Weiss. In fact, Special Order 40 is a policy adopted by the Los Angeles Police Department in 1979. And essentially, it does two things. One is it's a general prohibition of our officers or against our officers initiating an investigation with the sole purpose of discovering a person's immigration status. The second thing that Special Order 40 does, and by the way, a special order is a way that we have of changing our policy manual. The second thing that the special order did was to prohibit officers from arresting persons for illegal entry into the country, which is in fact a federal misdemeanor. It is true that we consider that Special Order 40 is very effective in increasing the amount of cooperation and public trust of all our communities, but specifically the immigrant communities, specifically minority communities.
And joining us now is District Three Councilmember Dennis Zine. Mr. Zine, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
A pleasure being with you, Jack.
Before we talk about the impact of the federal legislation that's proposed, first tell us about Special Order 40. What does it do? And just as important, what does it not do?
Well, Special Order 40, Los Angeles Police Department, it's decades old. It prevents Los Angeles police officers from inquiring about an individual's status in the United States. In other words, an officer is not permitted to approach an individual and ask for their birth certificate or their place of birth. It simply prevents police officers from inquiring about what is federal immigration law. That's what it does. What it does not do is harass the public. It does not turn the police officers into immigration enforcement officers.
During the discussion on the council floor, of course, we heard a bunch of acronyms, INS, ICE, ICE. Most people have heard of the Immigration and Naturalization Service. What is ICE in that context now?
ICE is Immigration Custom Enforcement, ICE. With Department of Homeland Security, they have a number of different departments that have been established under the umbrella of Homeland Security, and ICE is referred to as Immigration Custom Enforcement.
How does Special Order 40 make us safer? And how long has it been in place, by the way?
Well, it's been in place for many years, decades. It makes us safer in that people who become victims of crime don't have to worry about the local police, the LAPD enforcing immigration laws. If someone's a victim of a robbery or any type of crime, they need to feel free to report that crime to the Los Angeles Police Department for investigation so the officers can arrest the individual that perpetrated that particular crime. What Special Order 40, it's misconceived by a lot of people. People think that the LAPD is prevented from enforcing the law, prevented from enforcing the penal code or the vehicle code. Simply, it means you're not going to be an immigration enforcement officer, a branch of the federal government. But what it does is permit individuals who are victims of crime, no matter where they're born, to report those crimes and for the LAPD to investigate.
Are there any other misconceptions the public might have about Special Order 40 and police involvement in immigration issues?
Well, there's a lot of misconceptions. And the other misconception is an individual who is in the country illegally, in the city of Los Angeles illegally, and commits a crime, that individual is not only prosecuted through our criminal justice system, but ICE, Immigration Custom Enforcement, is notified. And through that notification, oftentimes, people are deported. So individuals who are members of gangs, narcotics trafficking, et cetera, we enforce the immigration law against those individuals who are here in this country, in this city illegally, who are involved in criminal activity, whether it's narcotics or gangs or anything else. So the misconception is that if you're here illegally, you're not going to get arrested, you're not going to get prosecuted, and you'll continue to commit the crime. Law enforcement has an extra opportunity, not only the criminal sections that we enforce, but also the deportation. And many times, criminal aliens, people who are illegally committing crimes, are deported through the resources of the federal government. And that's a common standing practice that's been in place as long as Special Order 40's been in place. So the misconception continues, and we're trying to clear that misconception and bring about reality.
I want to ask you a question about something that you touched on briefly a moment ago. Victims of crimes, witnesses to crimes, when they come forward, obviously, they're going to be questioned. There'll be some investigation of the incidents that they want to talk about. Are you saying that no time during that interrogation would they be asked about, for example, their immigration status?
That's correct. Any victim or any witness will not be asked if they're here legal or illegal. Simply, the elements of that particular crime, the investigation, that or detectives will follow up. The only time the place of birth, the status in the United States, in the city of Los Angeles, becomes an issue is when an individual is a suspect accused of a crime. Any type of crime, misdemeanor, felony, high-grade crimes, they are then inquired, there's an inquiry, and if it's determined that they are here illegally, Immigration Custom Enforcement, ICE, is notified. And many times again, those individuals, the suspects, are deported.
Great. Thanks for clearing that up. Now, if you would, tell us about the National League of Cities and the Immigration Task Force, and in fact, you lead for that group.
Yes, I was put in charge of the National League of Cities Immigration Task Force last year. And what we're trying to do is come up with a comprehensive plan for immigration enforcement in the United States. And National League of Cities has taken a position, by the way, National League of Cities represents large and small cities across America, everywhere from Los Angeles to New York, everything in between, taken a position that local police officers need to deal with local crimes, crimes that violate the penal code, the vehicle code, et cetera, that they're not Immigration and Custom Enforcement officers. So the National League of Cities has taken a position that our local police have tremendous responsibilities, most of them are understaffed, and we need to focus their attention on the crimes that take place. That's the NLC policy. As far as the task force, we've come up with what we believe is a comprehensive approach: border protection, to reinforce the border, to have employer verification, and to take the 12-plus million individuals who are declared illegal in the United States and bring them into a legal status, not through amnesty, but individuals who are here on a visa and the visa expired, individuals who started a profession, they're no longer in that profession, a student visa. There's a number of the 12-plus million people who are declared illegal who actually entered this country legally, but they're now declared illegal because their status changed. So there's three components of it: fortify the border, the activity with the employer, verification through the federal government, through an opportunity to make sure that individual is actually here legally, and then the third aspect. So we've got the three components to bring this about. So we're not going to just give amnesty and say, "You're here, we're going to forget about it, you can remain here without any consequences." There will be consequences, and there will be a process to bring those people into compliance, not citizens, but to bring them into compliance with the laws that we have here in the country.
When you say their status may have changed, you mean somebody who may have come here, for example, on a student visa and it simply expired, but they didn't leave the country?
Exactly, expired, or they didn't complete school, they dropped out of school, or someone who got married and then got divorced. There's a variety of factors that play into the situation where they're all in this big category of illegal. People want to think that they all snuck across the border, whether it be the border, Mexico, or the Canadian border, any other border. And when we talk about immigration in the city of Los Angeles with all the languages that we speak, we've got immigrants that come here from all over the world. And people from Ireland sometimes enter this country and this city illegally. So it's not just one particular group of individuals, it's all the groups. And we want to bring them into compliance for the benefit of citizenship, if they wish to pursue that, but at least to have a documentation to know who we have in this country with homeland, environment, the security that we have to have. So there's a variety of factors that bring this in. So hopefully, Congress, hopefully, the president with his influence, will bring this about. This has been lingering for a long, long time. We need to come to an end to bring, fortify the border, employer verification, and then bring those folks that are out of compliance into compliance, not through amnesty, but through a legitimate process.
A moment ago, you mentioned the National League of Cities policy, but do other cities in fact have a Special Order 40 or something similar? And if so, how's it working for them?
Many of them do have that. Many of them have that just out of necessity, since they don't have enough police officers, they have that. And let me just explain briefly Special Order 40. Every special order that the LAPD adopts goes into the department manual. So it's a special order for that particular, then it becomes part of the policy within the police department. So they've tagged Special Order 40 with this rule on immigration, but it's clearly policy within the city of Los Angeles and other jurisdictions throughout the United States.
By the way, before I forget, this federal legislation that's been proposed, do you think it has any realistic chance of passing and becoming law?
I sure hope so. It's been a seesaw back and forth. I was at Washington, D.C., testified before Congress on the impact that we have in the city of Los Angeles and urging Congress to move forward with it. We hope that Congress will do it. It seems that when it passes the House of Representatives, then it doesn't go past the Senate, and then we know that our meetings with the White House representatives, congressional representatives, representatives from the U.S. Senate, everybody seems to want to make it happen, but unfortunately, it's not happening. And hopefully, before too long, we will have a comprehensive package that we can deliver to the American people and bring this into compliance, which has been way too long. It's been lingering way too many years, and we need to come for a final solution. And that rests with our federal elected representatives.
Oh, and by the way, during the council session on Tuesday, some state legislation was also discussed, as you know, legislation to help in controlling our gang problem by increasing asset forfeiture against members. Will we be able to actually collect money from gang members who break the law?
Well, we know that many gang members are involved in illegal enterprise, narcotics, and other illegal activities, and hopefully, that will hit them in the pocketbook, because we know many gangs thrive on the illegal activity, generate dollars. So this additional enforcement, this additional rules, regulations that we can enforce through the criminal justice system, hopefully, will curtail a lot of the economy that they're in business for. We need to crush the gangs. The bottom line is gangs create terrorism, it's urban terrorism. We need to use all the resources that we can apply to bring them into compliance, and we just want people to live a comfortable, legal environment, whether you're a gang member or a good citizen, and those rules have to be enforced.
You also, of course, talked about a sentencing component. If this passes, how soon might we see our prosecutors employing tougher sentencing measures?
Hopefully, as soon as it passes. We know that our governor is appropriating additional dollars. We know that the county of Los Angeles, the Los Angeles Police Department, they're all working to identify additional dollars to put into place, not only prevention, but apprehension and prosecution. It's got to be a multi-pronged attack, but we keep breeding new and new gang members, and we see the consequences, more and more violence, more shootings, more victims. So it's a comprehensive package that we need to put together, and hopefully, this legislation will help bring that about. We spend a lot of money on preventive programs, and most of them aren't worth a darn. They don't work. We're analyzing that now in the city council. One of my colleagues, Tony Cardenas, is championing that cause to try and bring this into which programs work and fund those, those that don't work, abandon those, and put your money where the best buck is made in the effective preventive programs and the effective enforcement programs.
Well, with your help, we'll be following it all here. District Three Councilmember Dennis Zine, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Jack, it's always a pleasure being with you. And to our viewers, watch 35, all the news that is news, channel 35.
After debate, the resolution to oppose federal legislation that would prohibit or preempt local ordinances was approved in a vote of 12 ayes and one no. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending June 15, 2007. On behalf of Ted Lynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
The city of Los Angeles, when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
I want one emergency.
How old is your daughter?
She's four years old. Her name's Janine.
I lost my puppy. Can you help me?
We have a critical missing. There is an Amber Alert, so let's look for any information you get, pass that into the watch commander. Let's be careful out there.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
I'd be going nuts if this was my daughter.
We're here, this is 7855, 7855, 211, security, home public, and hard more, the child market, suspect 958, class 1, side 5, off, towards one, taking this, courtesy, code 3.
7855, Roger.
All units, code 4, live, the Catalina suspect.
Standing with our community.
Los Angeles Police Department, this morning issued an Amber Alert. A suspect is driving a black Honda Civic.
To protect and to serve.
All units, code 4, live, the Catalina suspect.
Standing with our community.
Los Angeles Police Department, this morning issued an Amber Alert. A suspect is driving a black Honda Civic.
Working as a team.
Hey, what's up?
I think I saw that car that you were looking for.
Can you show us?
Yeah.
That's good.
They take pride in what they do.
Day 9, 10, code 6, on the record.
And when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
It's a positive on the vehicle.
Roger.
I saw two, we have positive on the Amber Alert vehicle.
It looks like they found the car.
The LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com. L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. This is Friday, June 22. City Council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Fridays is usually a special day for presentations and introductions. We are still awaiting a quorum. I would ask Mr. Alarcon, Ms. Han, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, Mr. Smith, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Zine to make their way down to the council chambers. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Labange for an introduction, and then we will follow by Mr. Reyes in our first presentation.
Good morning, Madam President. We have a great group who sit our midst in the John for all chambers amongst all of the great people who are here in this building today. These are visitors invited to the United States under the auspices of the Department of State and the International Visitors Leadership Program accompanied by the United States Department. This is the Interactive Media Grassroots Journalism Program, and these are young journalists from Korea who are here today to learn a little about the American way of life and how things work in our community, how the media works. So I just wanted to bring them up here and give them a big welcome to the great city of Los Angeles. Kamsa midah, ching you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Would like Mr. Labange. Mr. Rosendahl wanted to say something?
When you said interactive journalism, talking about journalism, you know, the journalist has a tremendous responsibility to inform, educate, and connect the people to the social issues of the day. As our democracies on the earth become stronger, knowledge, information is key, and what you're doing here is fantastic. Maybe the American journalists, especially in this great city, could learn from you so that their journalist expression would be more empowering, more informative. There's a lot of what we call gotcha politics, bleed if it leads. People don't really know what's going on, and maybe you can help lead the way for the American journalists to become more responsive to the democracy here. Welcome. We're happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Reyes for our first presentation.
Could I ask Father Marco Ortiz to join me at the podium? And his guests, if you'd like. Council President, good morning, colleagues. Today I have the honor of being joined by Father Marco Ortiz. In my sixteen years working in the council office, six years as a council member, rarely do I find an individual who makes such a dramatic difference in our community. When I heard that Father Marco Ortiz would be leaving the Divine Savior Parish, I thought it was critical that he be recognized for his energy, for his optimism, for his can-do attitude in changing the environment in Cypress Park. A little bit about Father first. Father Marco Ortiz was born in Los Mochis, Sinaloa, in 1971. He came to the United States in 1988 and joined the Dayosin Seminary of Tijuana, Mexico in 1993, where he received a Bachelor of Arts in Philosophy as a seminarian of the Art Studies of Los Angeles. In 1996, he arrived in St. John's Seminary in Camarillo, California, where he received a Masters of Divinity and Theology. He was ordained by Cardinal Roger Mahoney in the year 2000. While his first assignment was an associate pastor at Santa Clara Church in Oxnard, he was most recent assignment is why we invited him today. Father Marco was the administrator of Divine Savior Catholic Church in Cypress Park in July of 2005. In the two years that Father Marco has been at that parish, he has reinvigorated, revitalized the parish, and parishioners' involvement in this community. He undertook the repairing and renovating of a church, rectory, school, and parish grounds. He brought forth public safety issues, identified where the lights needed to be for the safety of not only the parishioners but the people of Cypress Park. He has endeavored in providing childcare services for the parishioners in the community, organized an evangelical week to attract children to the church and its community involvement. In short, he has been a godsend for this community. I know this for a fact because I grew up in Cypress Park, and believe me, if he wasn't, I would hear about it anyway. But the fact is, the church, along with the city, has been working as a partner. We have been able to reinvigorate a sense of confidence, and I must remind our colleagues that back in 95 Cypress Park is the site where the young girl gets shot because of a drug transaction that stimulated Bill Clinton to talk about the types of dangers we find in major cities. And through that effort, we got federal funding and received resources for the CLIR program. But I know all good things come to an end, and a testament to his support, we have here the ministry of Divine Savior Church. Now, the ministry are individuals who take the time to go into the community throughout Northeast and provide consolvents, they provide the Eucharist, they pray with those who are in their last days, who are sickly, who are left alone, and these are the folks who go out there and provide companionship and support. So the ministries, por favor, a piel ministeria de eucarista. These are the folks. Give a round of applause for joining Father Marco. Muchas gracias. And I must be opportunistic. I don't want to embarrass her, but this is, I think, the second time my mom has come to City Hall, and I want to acknowledge my mom in my chair. So Father Marco, it is with great, great sense of thanks, of gratitude, that we share this resolution signed by the mayor, the president of the council, the full council, our city attorney, Rocky Delgado, Laura Chek, and Frank Martinez, as a testament to all the good you've done for Cypress Park, the Northeast, indeed a symbol for the youth in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I think that I have to say that this is too much credit for me. It's really the community of Cypress Park, the neighborhood council, that has made a lot of things happen as well. So just wanted to thank you, and this is great because this is what we do for a living. This is our call for us priests to be consecrated for the common good of the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Muchas gracias por estar con nosotros. Yo se que tienen un itinerario y obligaciones en la casa con trabajo.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. But I'd like to ask everybody, please give Mr. Reyes' beautiful mother another great hand for her beautiful leadership. Women of the church and Father, congratulations. It's very nice. Councilmember Wendy Gruel, please.
Thank you. I know Mr. Zine maybe was almost ready to go. He is, yes. I'm fine, so...
Okay, I will ask Ms. Gruel to yield the time to the councilman of the third district. I'd like to ask the councilman of the third district to get his jacket on, though. Thank you. I was in committee, and they're trying to find where my jacket went. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, for loaning me your coat. We're here to celebrate a very, very special lady, a very, very special birthday. A familiar face around the city of Los Angeles. I don't know why your husband's in the back. Why don't you come up front here? Nick, one of our Water and Power Commissioners, Nick Patzouris, his lovely wife, Sylvia. Excuse me, Mrs. Zine, introduce the great man next to you on the right. Well, I'm going to have him speak, too. I just want to give a little introduction of what we're doing. We are here celebrating a 100th birthday for one of our city residents who is here today, and we're honoring her on her 100th birthday, and she is with the lovely family of the Patzouris family, and she's a resident of the third district, lives in Tarzana, and she's voted for me for many, many years. For the last 40 years, she's been voting for me. And the mayor and I are here to do a presentation for her 100th birthday. 100 years old. And very honored to have the mayor join us for this very, very special presentation. Ms. Reyes, resident of the city of Los Angeles for over 40 years, we celebrate her 100th birthday on July 18. Born in Paral in the state of Chihuahua, Mexico, but her family's main residence was the city of... Give me that one.
Paral.
No, Paral. We did Paral, now Chihuahua.
The city of Chihuahua.
And then now the city of Chihuahua.
Chihuahua, like the little dog?
The little dog, Chihuahua.
Except it's a big state.
I'd never been there. Her father passed away during the Mexican Revolution in the early part of the 20th century. Her mother moved with the children to the border city of Juarez, Juarez, and then moved back to Chihuahua after a couple of years. She was a young woman, wanted to be gainfully employed, began work in the local telephone company before we had cell phones. Immediately became interested in improving working conditions for the telephone company employees and transferred to Mexico City, became involved with the labor movement in Mexico City, and her commitment for her fellow employees made it possible for her to form the first telephone employees' union. Incredible, incredible. It's interesting that I was the union director with the Police Protective League, our mayor was a former union director, and here we are honoring you on this very special day, and you have the union background. While in Mexico City, reunited with the childhood friend from Chihuahua, Salvador Reyes, who was studying Engineering Polytech Institute, Mexico City. Ernestina and Salvador married, moved back to Chihuahua, and had three children. Three children, and one of them is with us today, Sylvia. All three? Will take a stand up, please. Angelina, Ruben, and Sylvia, all three of them here. Fantastic, fantastic. In 1955, Ernestina and Salvador moved with their young children to El Paso, Texas, dedicated her professional life to improving working conditions for her fellow workers, and dedicated her personal life to guiding and encouraging her children to ensure they received a good education. City Council, on behalf of its residents, hereby congratulate you on the occasion of your 100th birthday, and joining me for some comments is Mayor of the city of Los Angeles, who's here to also show his honor for you, Honorable Mayor Antonio Villagosa.
Thank you, Councilmember Zine, and it's always good to come before this chamber, and I want to say to you that I wouldn't be here if, for me, this wasn't a personally important event. The Patzouris family is a family that I consider my own. Nick Patzouris and I have known each other for some 20 years, and Sylvia and I nearly that long as well. As you know, both of them are not only city residents for a very, very long time, but also city commissioners. Sylvia Patzouris, in addition to being an urban planner by profession, sits on our airport commission, and has done an excellent job at regionalizing the airport and addressing the need to modernize our airport at LAX. And of course, everyone knows Nick Patzouris, who sits on the DWP board and along with David Nahai, is protecting the ratepayers of the city of Los Angeles, has been an absolute advocate for good government and efficiency in government, and very importantly, for our green initiative, our renewable effort to move to 20% renewables by the year 2010. And of course, this family has not only two wonderful children, they have a brother, Ruben, from Mexico City, and the whole family is here. But we're here to celebrate the birthday of the woman that made it all possible. She's the force behind Sylvia Patzouris, and I can tell you that her middle name is Alcalde. Ernestina Alcalde Reyes, a union organizer, a woman of indomitable spirit, a woman, by the way, who if you had a conversation with, has a very, very lucid and agile mind still, and we call her 100 years young, and today we celebrate her birthday. Y quiero decir feliz cumpleaños, señora Reyes, feliz cumpleaños. ¿Puedo cantar las mañanitas? ¿Se pueden cantar? Estas son las mañanitas que cantaba Rey David. A las muchachas bonitas se las cantamos a ti. Despierta, mi bien despierta, mira que ya amaneció. Ya los pajaritos cantan la luna, ya se metió.
As you do, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Rosendahl, you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. President. It looks like our mayor is truly a rock star, and he can start singing now for all of us, which we think is very nice. I just wanted to comment. I asked her her secret to her 100 years and why she's here. She says, "Well, you know, you respect the doctors, but you don't always have to listen to them. I still put salt on my food, and I still have sugar." Salt and sugar she still has, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Gruel.
I just want to add my... Sorry, I'm over here. Add my congratulations to your birthday and 100 years young. As Mr. Villagosa said, she has... She's sharp. When I introduced myself to her, she said, "I've seen you on TV." So she watches our council meetings. I don't know if that's a good thing or not, but just want to thank her for giving us a wonderful daughter who has been an active individual in our city, someone who we respect as well as you. So happy birthday. May we all live a long and healthy life like you have today. Congratulations.
Mr. Weiss would like to speak this moment.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to join our mayor, Mr. Zine, Ms. Gruel, in wishing your mother a happy birthday. Quisiera decir feliz cumpleaños también. And I'm working, Mr. Mayor. You have a wonderful, wonderful family who've given so much to Los Angeles, and this is truly the least Los Angeles can do for you after all your family has done for us.
Yes, thank you. It's been an honor to serve the city of Los Angeles, and thank you so much. This is a special honor for all of us. Thank you.
Nick, come on over here. Commissioner Nick Patzouris, Department of Water and Power.
Thank you. Really, it's an honor that you honored my mother-in-law today, but people complain about mothers-in-law, and she is the most wonderful person I ever met. She's kind, sweet, and she has been the foundation for their children's success. As you heard, her husband passed away at a very young age, so she was a single mother who raised three great children, and I thank you, and I'm very moved to be here today. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and we're going to go back and do some photographs with the family in the back with the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and...
Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the...
Thank you.
Alarcon, Codenas, Gruel, Han, Weeza, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present, and a quorum. Madam President?
Thank you. We are going to run through the agenda before we finish our presentations. First items.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, Smith seconds.
Mandatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 9 are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing.
Do we have any specials on items 1 through 9? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 eyes.
Those items have been approved. Next items.
Item 10 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 13. The recommendation is to grant the application.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 eyes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Items 11 through 18 are items which public hearings have been held and reports have been submitted on items 13 and 15.
So these are...
14.
Have not been held, is your correct?
Actually, this is public hearings have been held on these.
Have been held, okay. Do we have any specials? Mr. Labange?
14, please, 14. Number 12.
Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 eyes.
Those items have been approved. Next items?
Items 19 through 32 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Item 19 is a commission reappointment. Do you wish to hold... Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
We will hold item 19 on the desk.
That would leave Council 20 through 32.
We do have item number 23. There is a card on item number 23. We will call that special. Colleagues, any other specials? 19 through 32. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 eyes.
Thank you. Next items.
On the continuation agenda, item 33 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Anyone like to call that special? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 eyes.
Next items.
Madam President, that would take care of the items on the regular agenda. Do you wish to go into the special meeting?
Please.
Alacant, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weeza, Labange, Parks Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present, and a quorum.
Thank you. First item.
Items 34 through 39 are items which public hearings have been held. Item 34 is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
We will hold that on the desk.
That would leave items 35 through 39.
Any specials, colleagues? Any specials?
And Madam President, reports have not been submitted yet on 37 and 38.
We need to hold those on the desk until those are, we're waiting for those reports. As soon as they arrive, we will take action on those items. Madam Clerk, open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 eyes.
Those items have been approved.
35, fourth with, please.
Fourth with on 35, and 36 as well. Mr. Clerk?
Items 40 and 41 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. A motion is required on item 40, inasmuch as the report was submitted without recommendation.
Which committee was item 40?
That was Energy and Environment.
So it goes without recommendation, okay.
Vote on it today.
We will not vote on it today?
We do vote on it.
We do vote on it today.
It's fine, everything's been resolved.
Okay, so we approve the...
If we can send a fourth with, that would be, fourth with, that would be very helpful.
So you wish to move the recommendations of the CAO that were...
CAO report, okay. Thank you. Those items are now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 eyes.
Those items have been approved. Mr. Clerk?
That would take care of the items, take you back to special or presentations.
Thank you. Our next presentation is Ms. Perry.
There they are. You want a couple kids up front? Hey, guys, come on up. Come on up. See them on TV? Or you stand here so people can see you, okay? Any more kids?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of attending the various graduation exercises at the Synergy Charter Academy. Synergy Charter Academy is a public charter school that serves approximately 140 students from grades K through 5. Their method of using a standards-based curriculum while focusing on implementing new approaches in instruction has brought about very positive changes in the community. Their approach to education is to eliminate the achievement gap among educationally disadvantaged students in South LA. As a result of the innovation, achievements, and dedication of the faculty, the students, and the parents, Synergy Charter Academy has become the highest-performing school in all of South Los Angeles based on 2006 state standardized test scores. In addition, Synergy was also named National Charter School of the Year by the Center for Education Reform, the nation's premier education reform group. This prestigious honor was presented to 53 of the 3,940 charter schools in the entire country. It is truly a well-deserved honor for the staff, students, and parents of Synergy Charter Academy. I want to thank this opportunity, to thank the founders and the staff for their contributions to the educational development and empowering of families and children, and their commitment to educational excellence has made our city a better place in which to live. So thank you to the Synergy family, and I want to thank Meg and Randy Palisoc, the co-founder and co-directors of Synergy Academy. And with them today is Karen Scannell, teacher, Stephanie Partita, teacher Cecilia Partita, who is a second-grade student, Rhonda Diomambo, teacher, Bridget Yellen, Brandon Louie, Katie Aquino, Maria Varias, Emily De La Torre, Ruth Roque, and a number of family members, friends, and faculty. So I'd like to ask Meg and Randy if they'd like to come up and just say a few quick words, and give them a big hand.
Good morning. My name is Randy Palisoc, and I'm one of the co-directors of Synergy Charter Academy. And we're just really proud to be recognized in front of you today. As Councilwoman Perry mentioned, we're currently the highest-performing school in all of South Los Angeles, and in fact, we're the first and only school in the Jefferson High School complex to ever hit the state goal on the Academic Performance Index. And as a school, we're really, really proud that our school's accomplishments were recognized on a national level by being recognized as a 2007 National Charter School of the Year. Last month, I had the privilege of being honored in Washington DC with the other recipients, and again, I had the privilege of representing our school. Not only that, though, I just know that I had the honor of representing Los Angeles in Washington DC too, so it's great to be part of this city. And I attribute a lot of our success to the fact that every day and everything that we do, we try to really live up to our name, which is Synergy, and create a sense of synergy amongst our entire school community. And in order to understand synergy a little bit better, all you have to do is think of two people in a rowboat, and if they're facing the same direction and they're paddling at the same time, that boat is just going to glide along smoothly forward. But if you make them face opposite directions, all you're going to end up doing is just spinning around in circles and making yourself dizzy. So that's, that's why it's really important to have a sense of synergy, because you can accomplish a whole lot more if you're working together instead of working against each other. And I like to think of our school as an "in spite of" school. Our students are successful in spite of the fact that our student body is 100% Latino and African-American, in spite of the fact that 85% of our students are economically disadvantaged, and in spite of the fact that every Friday, all our students and teachers have to pack up their belongings and then set it up again every Monday because the church that we rent from has to use the building on the weekends. So can you imagine how much more our students could accomplish if we got rid of the "in spite of" in that equation? So I think students should be successful because of the system and not in spite of the system. So that's, that's, I'm really proud of the accomplishments that our entire school community has achieved. And I'll just leave you with this one last example of why we're proud of our school. A couple years ago, we took our students and their families on a family field trip to USC, which is just one and a half miles away from our campus. And while we were having lunch in front of Doheny Library, I went around talking to the parents, and I said, "Are you enjoying the trip?" And they said, "Yes," they enjoyed the tour of the college campus. And I asked one of them, "Have you ever been here before? It's only a mile and a half away from your home." And she said, "You know what, Mr. Palisoc? I've never been to USC before. I thought you needed special permission to come onto a university campus." So for this parent, coming to college was mentally, was physically off limits for her. And if it's physically off limits, it's also mentally off limits. And if it had not been for that field trip, it would have been hard for this parent to envision college as being a part of her daughter's future. So just thank you again for honoring us today, and we're really proud to be a part of the City of Los Angeles and here to make a difference. Thank you.
Ms. Perry, Mr. Weisar would like to make a few comments as well.
Just like to congratulate all the students for the wonderful work you've been doing and congratulate the leadership at this school. We know that it's people like yourself who just spoke that make a difference in children's lives. We know that there are options, we want to create options for families in these schools, in these communities, and you're doing just that. You're setting high expectations, and we know all these children can achieve so long as they're given the resources to succeed and the direction, and that's what you're doing. I applaud you. Please do what you're doing. We encourage you to continue doing what you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Weisar for, are you ready for your next presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I have with me today representatives from the LA Conservation Corps and also 10 individuals who gave up their time to help with the Katrina, Hurricane Katrina event that we saw this past year. These individuals, 10 of these individuals helped rebuild demolished homes, remove hazardous debris, and assist volunteers with other desperately needed services. As you know, Hurricane Katrina hit Mississippi on August 29, 2005, and was the costliest and one of the deadliest hurricanes in the history of the United States. 90% of structures within a half a mile of the coastline were completely destroyed. In the year and a half since Hurricane Katrina, debris's removal remains an ongoing challenge, but initial rebuilding has begun with the thousands upon thousands of volunteers who have gone to the area to help. But there is still a tremendous need for relief efforts, and this is something the Los Angeles Conservation Corps understands very well. So I want to congratulate and thank these ambassadors from the City of Los Angeles for going to Katrina, giving up their time and their lives. They spent one month down at Bay St. Louis, Mississippi, to help rebuild lives, to help rebuild the region. So I want to thank them, congratulate them, and in particular, I want to congratulate as well the LA Conservation Corps, who continues to do a tremendous job here in Los Angeles. They offer young people and adults opportunities to succeed by providing them with job training, education, and work skills. And as we've seen today, they are not only doing this here in Los Angeles, but nationally across the country. This is the type of representation and spirit and hope that we like to see throughout the country that Los Angeles is providing. So we congratulate them and we thank them. And now, I would like to invite Phil Matero, the Deputy Director of the LA Conservation Corps, to please come up and say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman Weisar. And it's just great to be among so many friends and supporters here at the City Council. We could not do the work that we do at the LA Conservation Corps without your support. And in particular, the City of LA funds our Clean and Green Program, and we just appreciate your continued support for all the work that we do to provide opportunities for young people to serve their communities, improve their own lives, and develop a sense of citizenship. I was able, and first of all, I'm the Deputy Director of the LA Conservation Corps. Our Executive Director, Bruce Sato, is on a well-deserved sabbatical this summer. That's why he is not able to be here with you today. I was able to visit the crew in Mississippi and see some of the work that they did, and I was just tremendously impressed with the quality of the work that we were able to provide some residents in Mississippi. And across the board, everyone I talked to said that our volunteers from LA were the best, the hardest-working, the most respectful, the most helpful of all the volunteers that were among the many thousands of volunteers that have been coming to the region to help out. So we were well-represented. The City of LA was very well-represented by these young people. And I want to call out their names because many of their parents are here today too to support them. But we had crew leaders, yes, thank you for being here today. We had crew leaders Gladys Espinosa and Anthony Claustro. They did a tremendous job of leading this team. The crew members were Jorge Lopez, Carlos Castillo, Albert Dukes, Oscar Guerrero, Jennifer Miller, Robert Mulero, Brian Sierra, and Rudy Mora. Thank you so much for your work, and thank you for this acknowledgement of their fine efforts today.
We also have with us Anthony Claustro, who's going to share a few words as well.
Welcome, everyone, today. My name's Anthony Claustro, was one of the crew supervisors for the Los Angeles Conservation Corps. And I actually want to thank the crew here that you see today for putting their time, their dedication to making a difference to our country and having a new adventure in our lives. Without them, you know, myself and Gladys, LA Conservation Corps, you know, what it's still been here in LA, but we're thankful to have an opportunity from LA Conservation Corps for, you know, giving us a chance to see something different and something new out in the West Side. I really want to thank Jose Weisar, who's our Councilman, for our City 14, which I'm proud to be part of. And I want to thank Pat Shabak-Riza, Irene Lopez, for giving us the opportunity. Without her, this wouldn't have been possible for us to go out there, and I really want to thank her from the bottom of our hearts. And I just really want to thank everyone from LA Conservation Corps and everyone that's here today. Thank you very much.
So as you can see, LA Conservation Corps is doing quite tremendous work to help our youth in job training, get their education, beautify and clean up our community, and they've extended this now nationally. It's just incredible the work they do, and we want to recognize them not only for what they did to help the people in Mississippi, but also the tremendous work they're doing here in the City of Los Angeles. So I'd like to present to you this resolution to LA Conservation Corps as Gulf Coast Recovery Katrina Team. So it's all the team who went out there. Thank you so much for the work you've done and for the spirit and hope you've given to the people in Mississippi. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We can go in the back and take more pictures back to town.
Mr. Weisar, thank you. They're very special people is the Conservation Corps. I'm glad Bruce Sato has a sabbatical. He's a great leader. But all of you, I loved what you said. Congratulations. Let's hear it again for the Conservation Corps of Los Angeles. And now I'd like to call on Councilmember Wendy Grul.
I am here today to present a proclamation. It's sad news and good news at the same time. Many of you have seen Hank Amigo here in our council chambers. We were able to present to him and his students with their play, "Nobody Runs Alone," that was performed in Mr. Labange's district, also in Mr. Zine's district. And Hank is going to come to your district, Mr. Zine. He's leaving mine and coming to Woodland Hills. Hank Amigo began his career at Fair Avenue Elementary School in 1990. He motivated his students in elementary school and continues to follow their educational careers. He has worked tirelessly and demonstrated his innovative and inspirational teaching abilities and his style, and has encouraged his students to excel. When I meet some of these students, they talk about Hank Amigo, their teacher, Mr. Amigo, and what wonderful things he has done for them and inspired them. And not only does he help them when they're there at Fair Avenue, but when they go on to their next level, Hank Amigo's not only their teacher, he's their friend. He started a soccer team in 1993 at the school, and in 1996, his team won the city district championship in Carson. He helped to develop the students' athletic skills and providing them motivation to study. He developed a mentoring program in 1995, which incorporated the soccer program, an after-school tutoring program, and a career-building program. And in 2004, Fair Avenue Elementary became a distinguished school, in part, I believe, and I know the principal say, with Amigo's mentoring program. He raised funds to open the Fair Avenue Science and Music Labs in 2005. In 2006, he wrote a musical, and his former students performed all of the parts, which many of you met here in the council chambers. In his musical entitled "Nobody Runs Alone," students from Fair Avenue, Sun Valley Middle School, and North Hollywood High School, and Cal State Northridge all performed together. Their play created hundreds of opportunities for kids to excel in language and the arts. He has taught at Fair Avenue for 17 years. He recently accepted a new challenge to work at Hale Middle School in Woodland Hills, beginning this fall. He has left a legacy at Fair Avenue Elementary School. He is someone that will be missed, but know that we now get to share him in Councilmember Zine's district. And so it's really my honor, we have present with us as well Principal Manrique from Fair Avenue. And I'd like to, if you would say just a few words, I know she's not expecting that, but you wanted to say a few things about Hank before we presented.
Good morning, and thank you.
And yes, this was unexpected. Sometimes I do better when that happens, so I'm going to try my best. What can I say about Mr. Amigo? Well, really, there are no words to express the immense gratitude that I, as a principal, for the few years that I have been at Fair Avenue, have towards him. He has made a great difference to the lives, not only academically for our students, but their own personal lives and their families. He will be a great, great loss, but I hope for the new school and for the new council member that is going to be lucky to have him, they will take good care of him. He's a great person, but I also, I'd like to say thank you to our wonderful council member, because she has been there to give us the support, the assistance, and the understanding. Thank you so much.
You do very well, just in a moment's notice. And so it's my pleasure to present a resolution. I have Yvette Garrity from my office, who has worked closely with Hank, wanted her to be here today. But this is a resolution to thank you, Hank, for all that you have done for Fair Avenue Elementary School, my district, and the kids, and your efforts will be felt for years to come across the City of Los Angeles. So I'd love you to put your hands together and thank our wonderful teacher from Fair Avenue Elementary School, Hank Amigo.
Thank you to the council for all the help you've given me, especially Ms. Gruel. You're unbelievable. It's what the city government and the schools should be doing, working together like we did. And I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Zine in the same way. I also want to thank your staff, unbelievable, tireless workers, Yvette Garrity in particular. Thank you. I'm blessed, because I have the greatest job in the world. I work with little kids who come from social, economically deprived situations, and they're fantastic. They come with nothing, and they work hard every day, and they're becoming successful members of society. I wish you guys would get an opportunity, as a matter of fact, I wish City Council would come up with something, you know, everybody has to do jury duty. I wish people would, adults would have to come down and go to an elementary school just for one day a year and spend some time with the kids. Because, thank you. It will make you feel like a kid again, and there's nothing wrong with that. Councilman Alarcon, thank you for your help. Councilman Cardenas, thank you always for your help. I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Zine. And I want to thank my principal, Ms. Manrique. I want to thank my new principal for hiring me, Mr. Siegel at Hale Elementary School. And I'm just a school teacher. I really, I can't take over a bunch of schools or take over the district. I can only take over one classroom at a time. And I wish everybody would think that way. We have fantastic kids, and we have fantastic adults in this community, and all we need to do is stop talking and start working together. Thank you so much.
Hold on just one moment, please. Mr. Zine, I'd like to contribute this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Labange. I wanted to add some comments to the presentation. You have a reputation for getting things done. And when people move into a community, I remember the old welcome wagon. Welcome wagon, come by and give brochures to some of the local businesses. Well, the official welcome to Hale in my district is going to be $1,000 from my account to help you get started over there with the programs you've got.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
That's the welcome reception you're going to get. And as I promised in the past, I will participate in your programs. I was going to do it last time, except I ended up going to Asia, but I look forward to the relationship. I know Wendy speaks highly of you with the progress that you've had, and you've got that outlook that we really need to generate with our educational system to turn these young folks into positive role models for the community and to go on to a prosperous life instead of a life that ends up going down the wrong track. So congratulations, welcome to the West San Fernando Valley, and that check will be arriving shortly, $1,000. That's the welcome wagon check for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have one more presentation. I'd now like to call up the North Hollywood High School Science Bowl team to come up here and with Walter. North Hollywood High has a reputation, and their science team, their Science Bowl team, to go to extraordinary heights and wonderful accomplishments. And so I'm thrilled today, you guys can come up close, to present to the City Council this North Hollywood Science Team and this year's winners of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power Science Bowl. The students that are responsible for this victory stand before us. We have team captain, oh, these names I'm going to, I'm sorry if I don't pronounce them correctly, Angel, okay, Alex Eve?
Alexia.
Alex Eve. We have John Chen, Andrew David, James Kim, and Emily Law, along with their coach, Alter Main. The North Hollywood team has demonstrated what the hard work of students and the dedication of their teachers can accomplish. These champions are a credit to their school. They serve as an example for entire San Fernando Valley and really stand as a beacon of success as they go forward to their next endeavors. The DWP Science Bowl is incredibly challenging and demands a level of science knowledge that I don't think I could barely comprehend. This year's program involved three main tasks: building a structure from paper, designing a boat made of aluminum foil to float while an ever-increasing number of pennies, and answering brain-twisting puzzles. I heard Angel had to identify a certain species of fish during the competition, and the answer was?
Ichthyosaurus.
Ichthyosaurus?
Ichthyosaurus.
Ichthyosaurus. I can, as I have my notes here, I can barely pronounce the fish, much less identify it. So I'd like us to give them a great round of applause for their many, many achievements. And before we do that, I want to indicate that the Science Bowl, nine out of the last ten years, North Hollywood has won, and in fact, the North Hollywood B-Team placed fourth in the city competition. This is really not possible with strong leadership. So I want to congratulate Mr. Main and not only the other teachers, but also the principal, Delling. And finally, I'd like to also thank the DDP for hosting this fantastic event. The annual Science Bowl would not be possible without the continued support and sponsorship of our Department of Water and Power, and they're providing this opportunity to so many children in the Los Angeles area. And so with that, I do have proclamations for each of them. I would like to also acknowledge Walter, who's not an unfamiliar face to our chambers, who has come every year and put this on. Let's give a great round of applause for Walter Zeisel from our Department of Water and Power.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruel, and Council President Labange and members of the council. Just want to say a couple, add a couple thoughts to this presentation, because you took most of my thunder, but that's appropriate. That's okay. But I wanted to say, we look at this as sort of a celebration of science and success, because we look at students like the Science Bowl team as our future workforce, that could work for Water and Power, that could work for other city departments, and we're hoping that that will be a reality, because we all need their talents. But also, this is an example of a true partnership. We've heard other presentations today, people talking about partnerships. Well, this is an example of the city coming together with the school district, with the schools, and with outside community corporations, nonprofit organizations, all involved, as well as a volunteer steering committee and our volunteers. And we have companies like Hitachi and AT&amp;T, and association, professional associations like the IEEE and Engineers Council have all supported the event. And the city itself is actually a cosponsor of the Science Bowl through Channel 35, which I know is airing this broadcast, but they produce a half-hour video, which is shown seven times, this year was shown seven times, on their station as well as the school district's station, Channel 58. So Science Bowl itself is a tremendous partnership program. Science Bowl is part of the U.S. Department of Energy National Science Bowl program. This competition is in forty states, involves 12,000 students and 1,800 high schools. The team represented the city at the National Science Bowl, and that trip was sponsored by the U.S. Department of Energy. They went five and two in the regional, in the national competition this year, winning by wide margins against schools from around the country, losing to two teams from Colorado and to, in New Jersey. We're very proud of their efforts this year, their tremendous, their brilliance, as well as their hard work, and it gives me great pleasure to introduce them to you and thank them for their wonderful work. I also like to thank my colleagues at Water and Power and the department for their support that make this program, among others, around the department, like our teacher workshops and our adopted school program, and some of our other efforts in the schools possible. So thank you very much. And we appreciate the students and also their coach, Alter Main, who is a whiz kid in his own right, and he's a tremendous, spends a great deal of his own time making this possible, and we thank him for his efforts, as well as all the other coaches that participated this year. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was just, like I did the principal, ask your team captain if he wanted to say a few words before we make the final presentation.
Well, I'd just like to thank you for the recognition. It's really, well, we really do it mostly for the fun, so it's, I guess, an added bonus to our experience. We work hard and to reach our, I guess, level of excellence. And it's just, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. If we could again give, we're going to hand out the proclamations in the back, but give this wonderful North Hollywood Science Bowl a great round of applause for all of their efforts.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Gruel. Congratulations, North Hollywood Huskies, and congratulations, Walter Zeisel. Great leadership there for the Department of Water and Power.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please. A public comment. I'd like to call Mr. Evans for the first public comment, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, we have a real serious problem at King Drew. If King Drew is allowed to close, if it's closed under any set of conditions, there will not be any way to respond to a biochemical attack. There will not be a frontline hospital. I have asked the Vice President to have the VA and the Department of the Army examine a public policy position of the VA or the Department of the Army taking over King Drew. It is just that severe. Can you imagine the 37th Congressional District, the 33rd and the 35th, without a primary emergency hospital in the event that Al Qaeda could strike, or if Long Beach Harbor or our port were attacked? Number two, I truly hope the council will take an aggressive and proactive position and get a brand-new city attorney. This city has been embarrassed beyond belief. It is just unacceptable from a public policy point of view to have the level of integrity of the city in doubt every night on CNN and Fox News. Copy to the letter, a copy of the letter to the Vice President's available for your review. Thank you very much. Merv Evans, I'm counting on you. Please vote on Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President, councilmembers. I'm going to speak in a different tone. It's been a rough week for the city attorney, and I wish all of our politicians were perfect, but they're not. Their families aren't perfect. We all make mistakes. But let me talk about some of the good things that Rocky has done. He's worked really, really hard in the last few years to really deal with our gang problems. Our schools are much better, they're safer, our kids go to school under better conditions. And more importantly, he's reduced the payouts that this city and this council has made in the last few years. That's more important, because those dollars are being used by the ratepayers, the people that represent the City of Los Angeles. So I wish all of our politicians were perfect. I think it's, we need to forgive and forget, and hopefully, all the issues will be resolved. But again, I hope we have a little forgiveness in our hearts and allow the truth to come through. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, everybody. What a great meeting. Boy, after hearing the mayor sing today, I think he ought to, he ought to be appearing with Woody Allen. I read in today's paper that Woody Allen is directing the opera, the L.A. Opera. Maybe Woody Allen can hire the mayor, Mayor Vera Gose, to sing at the Puccini Opus that he'll be directing in September. What a big thrill. Yesterday, I was hiking up in Griffith Park with members, friends of mine from the 4th District, and thanks to Councilman Labange, they opened the park, and I got to meet Olympic gold medalist Rod Dixon, one of the greatest thrills of my life. Fellow who ran a 208 marathon, a sub-four-minute miler, and what a thrill. And then some kid comes up to me, says, can I get a picture of you, Melrose, a close-up, and Rod Dixon sitting there like a, like he's not an Olympic gold medal, only in America, only in America. My cat is doing fine, Herb Wesson. I urge everybody to adopt a dog or a cat. If you want true love, adopt a stray animal. That cat will not leave my bed. We watch C-SPAN together at night. That cat gives me more love than any of my girlfriends, and I have more girlfriends than all you put together. All right, sorry. Tomorrow's a great day, City of San Francisco. For the first time in forty-five years, my beloved New York Yankees are playing in San Francisco. The police are in town tonight. The Hollywood Bowl, the police, not LAPD, the police, the ban, you know, every step you take. And Hollywood Bowl debuts tonight, great season. And I can't compete with Mayor Vera Gose, but I love Chuck Berry. As I got on a city bus and found a vacant seat, I thought upon my future bride walking up the street. That's all you're going to get of Nadine. Herb Wesson, Herb, is that you? I say Herb Wesson. Herb, is that you? I love Chuck Berry. I'm a New York Jew. I will have my proposal for a Chuck Berry concert into you next week. Thank you. I love you, Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Melrose Larry Green. Denise De Castaneda, I'm sorry, I don't, and then Mr. Armando Herman.
Thank you. I had originally, thank you. I had originally came to request to see if I could hold up a banner concerning the situation that's going right now with the city attorney, the L.A. city attorney. I think it's kind of sad. Right now, currently, we have numerous youths that are not able to graduate due to the KSC, visiting from another city. I did grow up in Los Angeles, and thanks to two wonderful teachers who encouraged me to go, you know, and try my very best and go forward. I have my sons right here, who are academic achievers three years in a row. My grandson just came from Sacramento, because my son, who is in the 12th grade, was trying to enroll at the local high school, which is boasting of an individual who has been, who came, I mean, we have youths that have been in the school districts throughout California who have been in the program since preschool and are not able to pass the KSC or graduate or get a high school diploma. Yet, this high school that I'm speaking of boasts of an individual that has been in this country under a year, and within ten months was able to pass both KSCs. And I can understand the math part about it, but the language part, how is it that this individual was able to pass, but yet the individuals that are in the programs in preschool and so forth are not able to? And I think we need to focus the energy on our youths versus all these things that are going around with the city attorney. And Paris Hilton got an offer of a million dollars. A common person would not only get a police record, not even an offer or anything. And I hope Paris Hilton takes this opportunity to address the issues of our youths and makes a difference and start, and be a good role model and not a bad role model as she has been in the past. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Armando Herman.
Good morning, council. Today, I wish to speak to you about the failed service of city services. City services continue to fail to the public. It fails to the people of Los Angeles. Why? Why? Because of the hypocrisy and injustice of city services. Why should certain cities receive special services and not the communities where I live, such as in Boyle Heights? We hear of all these stories about ethics commissions doing this and doing that, they haven't done one thing. Rocky Doggedale, what he did was wrong, it should be an investigation. Also, the schemes behind certain individuals and their developers, again, another investigation. Why take city services away from those of us who are taxpayers, as I mentioned? But I'm gonna read to you my feelings of this corruption in City Hall, and I ask that there be a more transparent view to what's going on here, as opposed to what I see and hear and read about. I have seen dark hours in my life, and I have seen the darkness gradually disappearing and the light gradually increasing. One by one, I have seen obstacles removed, errors corrected, prejudice softened, prosecutions relinquished, and my, and my people, or the people of L.A., advancing in all the elements that make up the sums of general welfare. I remember that God reigns in eternity, and that whatever delays, disappointments, and discouragements may come, truth, justice, liberty, and humanity will prevail. So, all I ask is, there be a little more city services to the taxpayers in Boyle Heights. I'm tired of calling in for bulky items, for graffiti removal, and yes, I have contacted Caltrans, remove all the graffiti on the sixty freeway to the five freeway going north.
Thank you very much. That closes our public comment. Mr. Clerk, our next items.
Item nineteen is the reappointment of Dr. Yvonne Chan to the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families.
Yes, is Dr. Chan here today? I, I don't see her, but I think, yes, thank you, Mr. Labange.
She's on her way, so we'll hold it on the table. Thank you.
I was gonna say, we could go ahead and approve it now, unless you wanna wait.
She's parking.
She's parking, okay, then we'll, we'll hold that one on the desk. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item thirty-four is the reappointment of Ms. Anna Kubas to the Board of Information Technology Commissioners.
Thank you. Ms. Kubas. I know this is your reappointment. Anything you'd like to say before we take action on this item?
Thank you very much. First of all, I would like to thank our great mayor for reappointing me to the commission. It's been a pleasure serving the commission in, for the past year and a half. One of the highlights has been that we have been out in the community gauging input on the future of public access and the government channels, so for me, it's been quite educational to be out there, learning directly from the community. And I look forward to serving the city in, in another term.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar.
Thank you very much, and wanted to rise in support Anna Kubas for her reappointment. I've known Anna for some time, and she actually worked for me when I was at the school district, but what she was able to bring there was her knowledge of what she gained here at the city, and link the school district with some of the current things that the city was doing in the area of technology. So, she has a long history of working in these areas, not only that, one of the hardest workers I've known, so, Ms. Kubas, I just wanna congratulate you and thank you for the service that you've been giving the city, not only the time when you worked here, but also as you've gone on, even though you weren't employed by the city, you continue to give back to the city with your various volunteer activities. And I know you not only sit on this commission and support and help the city in technology, but you're involved in other various community events. For example, I know of your work you did in Pacoima, to bring technology to a very low-income neighborhood, and you actually replicated that in Pico Union, another low-income area where you're giving access to these low-income areas who need this technology in order to advance. But what's interesting, what I liked about those programs, is that you see parents now, a lot of them immigrant parents, who normally wouldn't ever be exposed to technology, sitting down and being able to look at the world through this small little screen now because of the work you've been doing. So, thank you so much for the work you do for the city of L.A., and also for our communities in the city of L.A.
Thank you.
The communities that oftentimes are overlooked. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to rise in support Anna Kubas. I, I do know that the suburban community must be very proud. It's great to have the presence of our diversity in these very important commissions, and the fact that you've been so involved, as Council Weisar has stated, in city, not only city and government issues, but you come with a genuine heart for the community, and that I always appreciate. So, congratulations, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Thank you for your commitment to the city. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item's been approved. Sorry, we'd like to go out to the valley. Ms. Brewer is there, and we missed her on the public comment. If you could go out to Ms. Brewer, our apologies.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. I'm gonna get an inferiority complex, this is twice now. Anyway, update on Encino Neighborhood Council, June twenty-eighth, two thousand and seven election, now six days away. Fact, no response to either of my two June eighteenth emails, one to Dunn regarding my public records request for Encino's Dunn-approved two thousand and seven election procedures, and Dunn's failure to provide information in ten days, and the second email to Carol Thorpe, Dunn's GM, asking why Encino's election is going forward after my Encino, June twenty-eighth, two thousand election concerns, sent to her on May twenty-ninth, two thousand and seven. Fact, last night, June twenty-first, at an Encino election committee meeting, the committee was told by the chair of the committee that Encino's current IEA, Independent Election Administrator, had been in the hospital for the last two weeks and would not be able to oversee Encino's election next Thursday, June twenty-eighth, and that another IEA would be handling the election. I understand this information was communicated verbally, nothing in writing, to the chair just before the seven P.M. meeting by Tom Soon, Encino's Dunn project coordinator. Why did Dunn and/or the IEA wait until June twenty-first, one week before Encino's election, to tell Encino they would be getting a new IEA for the June twenty-eighth election? One problem with the original IEA not doing the election is that all the vote-by-mail ballots, one hundred and fifty-three mailed out June fourth, were to be mailed back to the old IEA's post office box in Mission Hills. Committee concerns are how to get all the Encino's election information the old IEA has to the new IEA before June twenty-eighth election. Seeing that now, as of June twenty-first, Encino has a new IEA, and that the Encino Neighborhood Council Board has never approved any form of Encino two thousand and seven election procedures, Dunn approved or not since January twenty-fourth, two thousand and seven, that the June twenty-eighth, two thousand and seven Encino election needs to be postponed, as originally told Carol Thorpe on May twenty-ninth, two thousand and seven, one month ago. Dunn needs to do the right thing and postpone Encino's June twenty-eighth election. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and our apologies again. Ms. Brewer, the card was put on the, placed on the desk here, and we didn't see it. Mr. Clerk, I know we have item number thirty-seven and thirty-eight before us, those reports, unless anyone wants to call those special, we will approve those items. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Those will both go forth with, as well as item number thirteen, we would like to go forth with as well. Next item, I don't see Ms. Chan yet, so what's our next item?
Item twelve is called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks, there has been a public hearing on this item. There are cards, if you would like there to be a public hearing, otherwise, we did hear this in committee.
You wanna have the cards first?
You wanna hear from the public first, okay? Call the following individuals, Eric Nichols, followed by Wade Stevens, followed by Michaela Wright.
My name's Eric Nichols with Pacific Production Services. For the last nineteen years, I've served the film industry as a film permit expediting and consulting service that serves all of California and locales beyond. Once hired by production, our services allow clients to call one place and gather all the information required to film in a given set of locations, no matter what city, within work through the community issues and governmental issues to successfully complete the required film permits for a given shoot. This often involves community petitioning, notifications, coordination of police and fire, hanging no parking signs in coordination with DOT for requested street and lane closures. In every other city, we are treated as agents for our clients. We receive fair and equal treatment and access to all information to issuance of filming permits, as if we were equal to the production company. Film LA currently does not provide us with the same and equal treatment. When my staff contacts Film LA for information relating to specific filming locations or specific activities, we are asked to have our clients call in, and they will give that information directly to the client, or they will ask us for our client's name and telephone number and say they will provide that requested information to the clients directly. When there are issues that need to be worked out on a film permit, they do not call the designated service when one has been hired, but rather contact the production companies directly, even when the production company requests a Film LA representative to deal with us directly, and they may not be reachable at that time, even going to the point of telling the production company that they will not get a film permit without talking to Film LA. As professional service designated, designed to assist successful filming in this city, we are not given fair and equal treatment to represent our clients in this process. I respectfully request that today, you change the contract with Film LA, that they must treat permit services and agents of production companies as the designated representative for purposes of filming and film permit issues. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Wade Stevens.
Hello, I'm one of Eric Nichols' competitors, and we're pretty, we're pretty heavy competitors. However, we've come here today to speak to the council regarding your contractor, Film LA. They continue to discriminate against our businesses. They continue to interfere with our business. I cannot get public information when I call their office. I have a film shoot happening in Echo Park, for instance. I ask for special conditions for that area, I am dismissed. I am told that they need to contact my client. If I'm a general contractor, and I go into the business license or building and safety, and I request a permit to build a house, I do not expect building and safety to call my client and tell them they do not need to use my services. I expect building and safety to issue me a permit, so I can build the house for my client. Here, I would expect the same city of Los Angeles, and their contractor. I also would like to speak about notifications in the city of Los Angeles. As a person who used to do notifications, and a company that used to provide this service, I have never had one complaint regarding non-notification. I've also developed, with my fellow competitors, a verifiable notification system that I think would be advantageous to the city of Los Angeles. I'd like to thank Councilmember Perry for putting out the RFI. I understand that portions of this contract may come up forbid, and I look forward to working with all of you and making filming better in Los Angeles and keeping it here in the entertainment capital of the world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michaela.
Thank you. Good morning, council members. My name's Michelle Wright, and I'm the business owner of Beautiful Day Permits. And I have a couple concerns, and I don't know if it's okay to ask you, but what I'd like to do is see if you can actually change some wording in the current contract, 'cause I've seen what it says. And what I'd like it to say, instead of people, where it says Film LA provide equal treatment to all persons and organizations, I'd actually like to see if it can actually state Film LA be expected to provide equal treatment to all persons, organizations, agents, and permit services. And instead of saying who seek to film for motion picture, I'd like it to say who wish to process a request. The problem is, is we are not getting public information, we are being treated in a discriminatory fashion, and we need to get the same information that the general public gets. My other concern as well is, back in, I believe it was March thirteenth of two thousand and three, Laura Chick's office did an audit of this company, and stated, along with the CAO's office, that the refunds must go back to the production companies, and the overages that were collected needed to go back to the production companies. Currently, on Film LA's website, if you look on their website, there is over one million dollars for one year alone of unreturned funds. These funds belong to the production companies, and I believe they should go back there. We are very much wanting to keep filming here in L.A., and we would like to work with the council, or work with anyone that we can, to help encourage our filming here. It's a great capital, we'd like to keep it that way. I thank you for your time, and thank you very much. I do have some documents I would also like to get to the city council members that I'd like to submit.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much, Madam President. May I have the city staff, please? Colleagues, this item was heard in Budget and Finance, and certainly, many of the issues that were discussed here today by individuals with the cards are, should be aware that it's in litigation, and so that we do not have the ability to respond, nor should we respond as it relates to those concerns today. What we had asked in the committee was that we extend the L.A. film contract for another year, but there was specific information that we added to give our review a little more urgency, and so, let me ask the staff, as it relates to giving the council an update, but again, we want, we do not wanna get in anything close to the issues that may be in litigation, but just the process.
Okay, Councilman, I'm David Horano, from the Office of the CAO. In Budget, in committee, you asked that we put together a schedule for you on issuance of an RFI prior to issuing the RFP, in, in effort to collect additional information for, for the RFP. We've done that. We believe that the issuance of an RFI and the completion of the gathering of information and evaluating that information will take approximately eight weeks. However, we believe that there is sufficiently time between now and the time where we're planning on releasing the RFP, to only delay the issuance of the RFP by two weeks. So, with that said, we are, if you instruct us to issue an RFI in advance of the RFP, our target issuance date for the RFP would move back from September thirtieth to approximately October fourteenth.
Yeah, and I think the sentiment of the committee was to go the RFI route, to find out what is in the universe, or whether there are other companies or other ideas, before we then create a more comprehensive RFP, or even if we have to do an RFP, if we find out there's no other company that is in this business. And so, I think it gives us those kinds of options, and the sentiment of the Budget and Finance was it was worth a delay of pushing the RFP back in order to get the more, what we think, comprehensive information in the RFI. The key is, we'd like a timetable to make sure that one follows the other in some orderly fashion, so that we're not in the middle of next year and find out that we've not made progress, 'cause we're, this is, I think, the second time we've extended Film LA's contract, and we don't wanna get into that extension. One of the things that, in just a comment in the directions of the report, there were some concerns about whether we should give the Film LA a contract for a year, and I think we solved that by adding language in the extension that gives a thirty-day notice on either side that convoided the contract. The issue of providing equal treatment was addressed in two A of the committee report, where it was directed that Film LA was to provide equal treatment to all persons or organizations seeking permit, permits for film, motion pictures, television shows, movies, or music videos, and still photos. So, we think we've, we've resolved that issue, but we also have asked, and we wanna make sure that you've gotten the list of policies that was needed for you to go forward on your RFP, RFI. Have you gotten that from Film LA at this time?
We've gotten quite a few of them. I'd have to check, see how many we've gotten, but they are, they're complying with every request that we give them for information, so.
Okay, but I mean, have you gotten the list of policies so that you're prepared to be able to address the larger issues in the RFI and RFP?
Yeah, I believe we have enough information to construct the RFP correctly.
So, if we go forward today, as the report directs, basically, the only adjustment is that, from our original guidelines, was to move the RFP back a couple, would be, what, a couple of weeks?
Two weeks.
Okay, so we lose two weeks, but we get the RFI. So, when will the RFI actually go out on the street? So when will the RFI actually go out on the street?
We could -- we're in the process of actually drafting one right now, so within the next two weeks, we should be able to get it out the door if you would wish.
All right. And I don't recall at the committee, is our expectation that that would come back to committee, or that's going to go on the street directly from your office?
It would be up to you. We were assuming in the schedule that we would be directed to just go ahead and do it. If you'd like it to come back to committee in a formal manner, that would probably add a little bit of time to our schedule.
Let me just ask Mr. Miller if he would take the role in the sense of reviewing that in behalf of the council so that we can facilitate it, get it out on the street, and then I would think that we'd want to see the RFP before it goes on the street, but the RFI, I think, to facilitate, if you could stand in and do that review for the council, I think that would solve all of our concerns.
We'd be happy to. We work very closely with the C A O on all of these issues, so we'll.
Okay. So if we could go forward on that regard of the RFI with Mr. Miller's involvement, but when the RFP is done, that should come back through the committee. I think we've solved all of the issues we're concerned with. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to just rise and I think this is a timely conversation. If this RFP is going to be considering our concerns, I'm assuming this is the time to speak up, perhaps as a language that hopefully addresses the issue of accountability. In Angelino Heights and in other parts of my district, Highland Park, it's what they call a live stage, if you will. These are parts of the city that can be Iowa 1940s. It could be Main Street, you know, central California somewhere. Angelino Heights goes back turns a century, so a lot of movies and programs are shot there. But unfortunately, in the past few weeks, couple of months, we've been, for example, cornering with Angelino Heights to put together some languages as to how they're going to behave, where they're going to park, the notification, et cetera, et cetera. Really, that's typical of filming. And my staff has gone to the point where they're writing a language expecting that to be written by the people who are paying to do this, and their staff has not responded. And I have a stack of emails that have not been responded to. And I say this in public and on the record, because I believe we should have some level or some gauge, some document that says, this is how often they've responded to the council office on this issue, that we should have a way in which we could monitor their quality of service. Granted, they're the only game in town, it sounds like. They're the only entity that performs this particular function, but it doesn't mean that you should not be responsive. And how we gauge that, I'm not sure within a contract or RFP, but perhaps we should have some kind of a bi-monthly or quarterly report that indicates, these are the calls we got from these council offices, and this is what we did. And let us compare that record with our record to see if they're consistent, if the quality of that service is real. Now, we know that production companies, we don't want to lose jobs, we want to be business-friendly, but at what point do we begin to ask on whose back, especially if the resident has to walk four or five blocks just to get to their home when they should have parking in front of their house? And these are the sensitive balancing issues, and the pressures are different in different parts of the city. And even there, we can determine which parts are most used, because there are areas that have that type of desirability. So again, I just want to speak to that on the record, and hopefully we can see something in the contract that speaks to the quality of service and the responsiveness to our constituents and to the council office. Is that possible, something we can work in?
Absolutely. I think one of the things that we have been working on for some time is how to deal exactly with these issues, notification requirements, community-specific, community needs. I think you will see in the new contract some real specifics about how to deal with that, how to deal with individual communities establishing filming guidelines, hours of operation, parking issues, interfacing with council offices, et cetera. So that is very much on the C A O's in my mind in moving forward. I think when you see the RFP come back, you're going to see that there are those requirements that will be laid out.
There has to be an element of enforcement. We can say everything we need to say, and it sounds good, but really, when the rubber hits the road, who's enforcing this? Obviously, our L A P D is understaffed, they're stretched out to other kinds of issues, but where's the enforcement arm? That's where I think we need to focus on, because these are all flowery languages, and yeah, we should have, we could have, we're supposed to, but in fact, the burden is still there. And how we lay out the enforcement is going to be key.
And that has been one of the real tricky issues, and we're not quite done yet, but we will be when that RFP comes back. But everybody involved, the city, F L A, the permitees you heard from today, across the board, L A P D, everyone is concerned with getting an enforcement program in place so people know what their responsibilities are, who's on point, who's going to be held accountable.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Weezer.
Thank you very much. Some of my comments were around what Mr. Reyes was raising, and that was in the RFP. Can we include not only the needs for the industry, but also how do we balance that with the community needs in terms of what we're going to expect from them? And I think doing that at the RFP upfront is, even after we send a contract, kind of signals, gives a strong message about the need to balance the community's needs as well. So is that possible? Can we do that? I know Mr. Reyes raised that question.
It is. Our intent is going to be that we establish a formal process of dealing with the council offices, the various community, you know, the specific needs within the individual small communities within council districts are going to be addressed. They're going to need to be formalized, memorialized, so that everyone understands what those are. So yeah, we will absolutely be dealing with that in the RFP and the contract.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosendahl?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to make a quick comment, a positive comment about F L A. Alverston, which is the street in Westchester, and the Kentwood Home Garden homeowners group met. I asked them to come in and to discuss the issues we had on this street, and they brought back into their leadership a gentleman that had been a location manager for over 30 years. And so I met with the location managers, I've met with the community group. He showed up at the community meeting, and we resolved that street. We put a moratorium for 90 days on filming on the street. There were two houses being used. I agree with Mr. Parks that we don't know if an RFP will work or not. We don't know how many competitors there are out there, if there are competitors, so it's good for us to go through this process right now that gives us that flexibility, gives us a few more months to work with the group as it is and maybe be the group that we continue with. But I can just say a positive note from my personal experience with Westchester. My citizens were very happy with how they worked with us closely and resolved the issues we had on that block. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Mr. Hirono, Mr. Miller. I don't know if you can include these issues in the RFP. You know, there's an enormous amount of filming downtown, and the issues presented to me on a very, very regular basis involve failure of F L A on the enforcement side of parking notification, and it affects people over in the Arts District in an enormous way. In some cases, their cars have been towed, they've obviously been displaced, and they go through it over and over and over again. And I can't say that I necessarily blame the production companies, because F L A is supposed to be out there doing the enforcement. That's why we have them. So I need to see some language in there, if possible, that shows a higher level of sensitivity, again, to the neighborhood. Unique characteristics of a neighborhood could be lack of parking, or a more recent example, a production company that had made some financial commitments on doing a film shoot in an area where there's been a lot of gang activity and violent criminal activity, and a request had been made to not only have some shooting take place inside of a house, but to actually blow up a car on the street in a residential area. And I said no, and I was contacted, not by F L A, but another entertainment entity, saying, well, we already paid for it, we already made the commitments. And I said, well, that's too bad, because if you had asked me first, I would have told you absolutely not. The psychological damage, psychological and emotional damage to people who live in areas where they have to live with that kind of activity on an almost daily basis is unquantifiable. And if you can include some language in there to show that there is an ability to discern where you can do things like gunshots, pyrotechnics, explosions, violent activity in areas where there is already a high level of violent activity, and that perhaps it should be reconsidered, I would appreciate it. Again, the unique characteristics of a community.
Mr. Labange?
I just wanted to stand. I think on this whole issue here, which is real important, that there's 250,000 people in Southern California within one hour of Beverly and Los Yenega who are employed in this business, and that's an important value, and balancing out from the neighborhood needs as well as but from the industry needs. It's a very important industry. And I think it's some of your paraphrase of the issue, as you describe it in the RFP, should talk about the value of that business, the value of filming. As said for over 100 years, a rock's a rock, a tree's a tree, go shoot it in Griffith Park. It's very important. Now, there's no trees, so there's no shooting in Griffith Park, but in a lot of the area. But it's very important to let everyone know that there's an industry that we value, and that industry we want to make work and balance that out. The one thing I'd like to see more of is that Los Angeles police officers who are working off-duty, give them some encouragement to help in traffic direction, help in moving it around, serve the community as well as the film location, and give them some whatever coverage it needs to be in that area there, because that sometimes concerns people. Filming is a positive force in Los Angeles, and as Los Angeles redevelops itself in neighborhoods, sometimes that force is a concern to that particular neighborhood. I know there's overfilming in some neighborhoods would bother people, but finding a way to make it happen, to make it work for all, is your goal of what our objective is. Thank you very much. Any questions, me, Mr. Miller?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Well, the new title of the song is "A Rock's a Rock, a Tree's a Tree." I can see that being a new song. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Reyes?
Briefly, I have in my hands the Angelino Heights Community Guidelines that my staff worked on along with the community folks back in April 17. We were given a commitment that in two weeks, we'd have this discussion, and then in a month, we'd have this meeting with the community folks. It's now June. It never happened. So I'm sending this over to C McDonald directly, but again, I just want to share this with you, and just for the record, indicate the level of frustration that at least District One has in dealing with the challenges in Angelino Heights. Thank you.
All right. That's it for the speakers. Mr. Miller, anything to add?
Nope.
Okay. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very good. Next item, please.
Mr. President, I believe Dr. Chan is here for item 19, and that's the reappointment to the Commission for Children, Youth, and Families.
Wonderful. Doctor, please come forward. And welcome. Thank you for your patience.
Mr. Chair, as.
Mr. Labange, you're up to speak.
As chair of the committee that oversees this, this is a great commissioner, a great resident of Los Angeles, a great educator who's very special, whose roots are very deep in the educational reform in Los Angeles. Yvonne Chan, I ask for an aye vote. Say no more.
Well, you have anything to say? Because if not, we'll take the vote.
Oh, well, I just asked for the vote of confidence.
All right.
Thank you so much, and thanks for many of you being training me to be where I am today, okay?
Tell us what you did this morning, which is so special.
Oh, graduation. Da, 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 da. Okay. And they won't drop out either.
All right. There's no speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
There you go. Congratulations to you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Back to school now.
Back to school. Summer vacation break. Next item, please.
Item 14 was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange, number 14.
A quick presentation here, and ask that the members of the High Speed Authority come up here.
High Speed Authority? On item number 14.
Jose Martinez, if you'd like, sit right here as the deputy director and staff of this state agency, just give us a brief report.
You can have your colleagues join you at the table if they wish. Thank you.
Members, it's talked about, talked about, talked about, high-speed rail. Well, we're getting closer. We're getting closer. And I would ask that we bring this item again. I know Ms. Reyes has a friendly amendment that he smiled at me and said is very friendly, so we want to hear for that later. But at this time, I'm going to ask Jose Martinez, the deputy program manager, to give us a quick update as we move forward.
Thank you. On behalf of the councilmembers, on behalf of the High Speed Rail Authority, Jose Martinez, Southern California Representative for the Authority, I would like to thank you for carrying this resolution here today that supports the restoration of our funding for the next fiscal year and also keeps the item on the November 2008 election. This environmentally friendly project is a visionary project that will provide many benefits to the Los Angeles Basin, also to the state of California. One of our main objectives is to maintain momentum as we move forward from the work that we have developed in the last several years and also the last several months as we've been kicking off our environmental process and our preliminary engineering process. We need to maintain our momentum, and we need to provide solutions that improve the connectivity within the Los Angeles Basin to relieve airports, to connect to the Bombay Airport, to connect to Ontario Airport. That's definitely something that we are key on for the L A area. We are very sensitive of the issues in Los Angeles. We want to continue working with all the districts on this very important project. It's very important to have the community input as we develop this project, as we define it, because this is a project for all of us. I urge you to support this resolution, because this is the right project, and we believe this is the right time and this is the right place to create history for Los Angeles and California.
Mr. Martinez, thank you very much, members. This is a very important step of encouragement as we move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Rosendahl, and Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Council President. I agree, we definitely need a different and new approach in how we absorb a population that we anticipate to continue to come into California. But needless to say, we also have to be just as careful in how we treat those very sensitive and vulnerable areas, especially given the state investments that have already occurred. So for example, in District One, we have the Taylor Yard Park, it's now the state park, we have the cornfield, a pathway in which we understand this line will run through to get to Union Station. Two, three years ago, I asked for, and I had this discussion on a conference call with the state director of your organization, who has now left, where he agreed they would open up the E I R to consider other routes than just the linear one that follows the five freeway. We had asked to open it up to a degree where we look at a variety of routes that can extend as far as maybe even the west side, given how it comes down from the north. Lo and behold, just recently, in the past few years, we saw a change. We saw a limited scope that did not include all the other routes, but defined it just along the five. Now, my concern is consistency and how the agency, the organization is responding to our request. The change in leadership should not change the commitments that were made by this organization. That being said, I wanted to include, and I expressed to Councilman Labange, a friendly amendment that states that we ensure there is enough money in this or future budgets to engineer an alignment that does not impact urban state parks. When I speak to urban state parks, there's very few, and the two that are most profound and prominent are the state parks in the cornfield and in the Taylor Yard area. Now, we know. Now, we know in history that the state in the past has designated corridors as parkways, making everyone think that's going to be a parkway, and then it becomes a freeway. Now, that was back in the 20s and 30s. It's now 2007, but the methodology in which the way politics and government work, I don't believe has changed much. So I want to make sure that this particular amendment is in writing, and I would like an explanation in writing of why the change in the routes. We did have that one meeting before in our office, and I believe you were there, sir, and we never got back, because you were in a position to say, while we weren't here, it was someone else. And I wanted to be able to get on record why they changed the route designations from a much more, a wider scope versus such a narrow one that's there today. Thank you, Mr. Labonge. So could I have an explanation of that, not right now at this moment, but can I get that in writing from you on why it changed?
Absolutely. We will forward that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rosendahl? Mr. Rosendahl here?
If you can go to the next speaker.
All right, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Certainly, there are a lot of benefits for high-speed rail in California. One of the things I'm concerned about is that just because rail is so-called cleaner than other forms of transportation, it's not completely clean. And we know that actually rail pollutes a lot. So is there something that we've-- Yeah. Is there something in discussions about electrification, or to making sure that this high-speed rail actually meets really low standards of emissions?
This project is very unique, because the project is supported by the Sierra Club. The project is 100% electrified.
100% electrified.
So this will help combat--
Okay.
--global warming and all that, greenhouse effects. It's definitely an electrified system.
Okay, good. Glad to hear that.
Ms. Rosendahl, back, and you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate this. We're looking at a $950 million intramodal rail connecting to high-speed rail, and this is going to be, it appears, on the 2008 ballot. Is that true? Is that what you think?
Yes, currently, it's planned to be in November 2008. That's in addition to the other funding. This will be for the connections to connect to the backbone of the system.
And once the backbone is connected, then we can actually flesh out the rest of the system.
Correct.
When you look at the overall cost of putting together not just this part of it, but the overall rail system, what kind of figures are you looking at?
The overall program, the 700-mile system, we're looking at approximately a $40 billion cost that would be funded by many different sources. State funding, we're looking at federal funding, we're also investigating the potential for private funding, and also local agency funding, such as the Orange County Transportation Authority has provided funding for the project.
And the $40 billion would be spent over what period of time, and when could we, the people, expect to have this rail system in place?
Well, our vision is to try to have not only, most of it, by 2020 or so.
2020. So we're looking at '07 now, that's 13 years from now. 13 is a good, lucky number. So you think in 13 years, we could get the $40 billion together, and we could get this network happening?
By 20, before 2020, things will happen sooner. We have projects planned that will include great separations before that, so we will see benefits before the electrification begins along the corridors. We'll see great separations that will help the local traffic, because our system has to be completely great separated. So the benefits will happen incrementally, and we, the authority has, the Board of the Authority has developed a Phase One, that is San Francisco to the City of Anaheim, and that will be staged, but definitely the LA Basin is one of the first ones.
And you see us taking some of the old lines that have been sitting there rather dormant, freshening them up, making it happen, because we have the right of ways in actually getting it done?
That is one of our missions. One of our missions is to use existing railroad right-of-ways as much as we can, whether it be working with the BNSF or the Union Pacific Railroad, that's definitely something we're looking at, because we're trying to minimize impacts, especially as we go through the Central Valley. There's a lot of sensitive areas in the agriculture areas, and also in the urban areas.
And what role did Mike DeCaucus have to do with this historically?
Well, I'm not sure I can answer for Mr. DeCaucus.
Well, he's been a big proponent, as he's at UCLA, and he has been talking about this for years, and we all have been supporting it. Frankly, colleagues, it's a no-brainer once again. If we don't spend that $40 billion over the next 13, 14 years, the gridlock that we now have, which is totally unbearable, will be absolutely over the top. I'll leave LA. I'm not going to stay here if I can't move around in my car. But this is just part of the process. We need $100 billion in Southern California over the next 20 years to get all of our transportation infrastructure projects together. When I see the MTA playing about priorities and fighting over crumbs, what they need is to make a bigger pie so that we can do all these projects simultaneously. I can say in the 11th district where I live, we have north-south gridlock, east-west gridlock, and people want hope and believe that their elected officials will call a summit of all the transportation experts together, put them in a room, and come up with a 20-year plan that says it will cost $100 billion. Here's how we're going to fund it. We should fund it through gas taxes and bonds, and we should get that 1,600 Pennsylvania Avenue government, the President, and the Congress to get beyond their international follies and take those monies home to reinvest in our transportation infrastructure here. So we applaud you in going forward with it, and I obviously believe our council should support this unanimously. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Rosendahl. We have five speakers on this matter.
Give the Sierra Club, if I could give them my 30 seconds just to say something--
Well, they all have their two minutes, so we'll call them up. The public hearing was already held in committee, but we can open it up again if there's a motion to hear from the public speakers. Do I see a motion?
I would move it, except I know, is members okay? Because I know some people had an appointment in the field.
Well, if you want to limit it to--
It's going to be unanimous.
--a minute a person or two minutes a person. It's the pleasure of the council.
I move we have a three-minute, three-minute public hearing, and have them stand up here, line right up, and I'll help you start with the Sierra Club right here. Is a second--
All right, that's the motion. We have that approved?
All right.
Anyone opposed?
Okay.
There we go.
Good.
We have five speakers. Mr. Clark, Mr. Martinez--
Line up right there.
Mr. Walker, Mr. Reed, and Mr. Herman. Those are the five speakers on item number 14.
Okay, thank you. I'm Darrell Clark with the Sierra Club, Angeles Chapter Executive Committee Member and Transportation Co-Chair, representing 50,000 members in LA and Orange County. I'd like to compliment your action here, and I'll speak fast. This is not only for mobility, but a significant step to reduce global warming emissions, to displace oil-powered, both intrastate airplane flights and long-distance auto trips with electric-powered, per Councilmember Hahn's point, high-speed rail, which can be sustainably generated more easily than we can displace liquid automobile fuels. And Mr. Reyes, I would like to compliment your concerns about the parks. Obviously, the Sierra Club is very concerned, particularly about the river parks, and will be working closely with the process to make sure it's a well-designed, environmentally-sensitive route.
Thank you. Keep going. Next speaker.
I'm Bart Reed, Executive Director of the Transit Coalition and a member of the Rail Passengers Association of California. It's important to note that these are electrically-powered routes. In the earlier phases, they may be diesel in the early phases, but the lines are going to be straightened, and electrification is inevitable. We can't clean up the basin without electrification. We can't clean up the state without electrification. So that's an inevitable piece of this puzzle. I urge you to support this. Thank you.
My name is Justin Walker. I represent the National Association of Railroad Passengers, and I support this. I urge you to resolve to fully, to support full funding of the California High-Speed Rail Project, because it's clean technology, and it's fast, and our airports and our highways are clogged, and old solutions have not worked so far. And we need to think outside the box with this new plan, which has the support of dozens of agencies throughout the state and the nation. Please support this.
Obviously, I'm against it for the purpose that I believe the media should be involved along with the taxpayers to hear fully what this is going to do to the economy of our areas, and how it will reflect possibly a good or a bad side to it based on the number of people in the populated area. So before you make these decisions, let the public hear more about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the matter's now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Matters approved.
Mr. Martinez, the team, and the public comment. Thank you. Fourth with to the mayor. Fourth with to the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 23 was called special for a card from the public.
Mr. Herman, item number 23. Mr. Herman here? Mr. Herman, the microphone, please.
First of all--
On number 23.
It's a good idea what you plan to do around these parks, but I just want you to keep in mind there are parks that have not met this idea yet, especially in Boyle Heights. Take, for example, the Nick Pacheco jogging path in Evergreen and Caesar Chavez area where the new metro line is. That is a shameful, disgusting, bad situation right now due to the construction. I would expect that the Department of Public Works get out there maybe once a week, clean it up, and make it look like a jogging path before you start spending taxpayers' dollars again on enhancing parks. Parks in the area of CD14 have been very passive when it comes to making them better for the community, making them friendly to the community, rather than seeing the homeless living in them, as opposed to seeing transients pandering on them. So all I ask is that council really sit back and think how you're spending taxpayers' dollars on these projects. Tell the public how you plan to increase their taxes due to these new renovations in our areas, because I'm aware of it, and not everyone that reads, not everyone that listens, not everyone that's a stakeholder in the community of Boyle Heights is aware of these changes. And I just ask that you be fair, open-minded, and make sure that the public has the ability to understand what you're doing. The actions of your inappropriateness to hold some of these meetings behind closed doors, I take it offensively. I ask that you have a little more morals and come to the ethics of things that you participate with the community, and not among yourselves in using taxpayers' dollars.
Thank you. That item's now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
We can't hear you. Now we hear you. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Mr. President, there is an amending motion on item 40, and that item was already adopted. So I believe there's a motion to reconsider that item, but council must first suspend the rules because it was sent forthwith.
Mr. Smith.
Yes. Move to suspend the rules, reconsider item number 40 for technical amendment.
Mr. Clerk? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Smith.
Item 48--
Mr. President, now there's a vote to reconsider the item.
All right, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Smith.
Item number 48 has been distributed to you as a technical amendment that allows us to make one minor change in the contracts in case a state bill is passed that would change the contract. So it's a technical amendment that allows that to happen.
Very well. That matter's now before us.
And again, Mr. President, this would be on the CAO recommendations with the new amendment.
Very well. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you.
And that still is forthwith.
Forthwith on that minor. Mr. Garcetti would like that forthwith, even though Mr. Garcetti is not here right now, but he's listening to us. So hello, Mr. Garcetti. Next matter, please.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Post and refer.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Gruele requests to be excused to leave at noon on Friday, August 3rd, for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Weston, Mr. Rosendahl.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused to arrive at 11:30 on Wednesday, June 27th, for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Reyes, Mr. Parks.
And Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Friday, July 13th, for city business. A motion is required.
Ms. Hahn, Mr. Labonge.
And that would clear the desk.
Mr. Weston?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you for recognizing me at this point in time. I want to introduce a visitor from South Africa, Charlene Sikkar, visiting us from South Africa. So I just wanted everybody look and smile, because you're on--
You're on Candid Camera.
Yeah.
What part of South Africa?
Cape Town.
Cape Town, I visited Cape Town. I went to Table Mountain, Johannesburg, Pretoria, beautiful, beautiful country.
And, Mr. President, it's never been the same since you--
No, it hasn't been. But it's a beautiful, beautiful country. Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I'd like to announce that tomorrow, we'll have fun in the sun and getting things done in City One. We're actually going to be getting together for community cleanups over at Kensington Stairs at 802 East Kensington Road, and Lincoln High School, 3501 North Broadway, Cypress Park Library, 1150 Cypress Avenue, Montevista, Montevista Street School at 5423 Montevista Street, Magnolia Elementary, 1626 South Orchard Avenue, and Berando Middle School, 1157 South Berando. We have a whole group of committee leaders. We'll have committee cleanup, and we'll do everything in our part to make our committees cleaner, more inviting, and safer. So thank you for your cooperation, and I'd like to thank my staff for their hard work.
Thank you. More announcements. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to announce that the, our best friend daycare is having its third annual Unity Day tomorrow, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, at 55th and South Normandy. Also, the Empowerment Congress West Area Election Notice for 8th District, they will have a meet the candidates forum on Monday, June 25th, at 6:30 at Village Green, and the actual election will be Saturday, June 30th, 10:00 AM to 4:00 at Autobahn Magnet School. Also, our St. John Wellness and Child and Family Center will be having their grand opening on Tuesday, June 26th, 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and that's at 6,500 block of 8th Avenue. Yesterday, I participated in a news conference at the Epic Center, which we announced the opening of the LA City Pools for the summer. We just received a news release from Supervisor Burke in the 2nd District that all of the county pools will be opening as of June 23rd. So just for the public to be aware of, also on Saturday, June 23rd, the Southern California Conference of Women will have their annual 5K march and run. It will be held at the Baldwin Hills Shopping Center in the Sears Parking Lot, and that goes from 10:00 AM until 2:00. And then finally, the first annual LeMurtre Park Book Festival, which will honor recently deceased Bebe Moore Campbell, will highlight her books. But there'll be over 70 authors at this literary festival, 10:00 AM to, starts 10:00 AM on June 30th in LeMurtre Park, and so that's a first annual.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Labonge? Mr. Alakka, we'll get to you in a minute. Mr. Labonge, we're going to go backwards today.
I will ask tomorrow in the morning, anyone interested in helping in a cleanup of Griffith Park, co-sponsored by all of us and PAVA, the Pacific Asian Volunteer Association, we're going to clean up the Ferndale area and Western Canyon and the area near the Observatory. That's at 8:30 tomorrow morning. Also, on Sunday, if you want a great walk, come out on Sunset Boulevard. Project Angel Food, we're raising money for Project Angel Food, the great job they do to help people fight AIDS and HIV. And also, members, I'd like to ask that we go out and visit one of our local public libraries and find the joy in reading any time this weekend. Thank you so much. Finally, we're going to welcome all the mayors for the 75th Annual Conference of Mayors. At various events, our Mayor Antonio Vero Agostos will be leading the effort, but they'll be at several locations throughout the city through the weekend. Thank you. Have a good weekend. Drive safely, and summer--
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Summer came yesterday at 11:06.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Parks has one more.
I just want to make the public aware that Monday at 9 o'clock at the Coliseum, Ed Reyes, myself, Herb Weston, Jan Perry, and Janice Hahn will have a news conference highlighting the July 4th fireworks show at the Coliseum, and encouraging the community not to participate in the illegal fireworks that has been escalating in the community. So 9 o'clock on Monday.
Very well. Mr. Alakka.
Yes, members, I'm pleased to announce that St. Didika's Catholic Church is going to be celebrating their 50th anniversary this weekend. They're going to be having a church fair, and everyone's invited. That is at 14339 Astoria Street in Somar, between Glen Oakes and Borden Avenue, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Saturday, June 23rd, that's tomorrow. And also, at Hanson Dam, we have two big events that should be a lot of fun. First of all, the LAPD is sponsoring a car show-- First of all, the LAPD is sponsoring a car show at Hanson Dam at Osborne and Drofield from eight a.m. till three p.m. So if you are, you can bring your lowriders and other cars. Bill Rosendahl, if you want to bring your lowrider, you can come to Hanson Dam and exhibit it there. And also at Hanson Dam, we have a very interesting show that started at least ten years ago because I remember it started when I was a councilman the first time. And that is the American Heroes Air Show. And what this show does is it features all the emergency equipment and organizations that are triggered when we have a disaster, a fire. So it's a lot of fun with a lot of helicopters and rescue exhibits. So it's very informative. It's this weekend at Hanson Dam on Foothill and the two-ten freeway. And that is from nine a.m. to four p.m. So if you want to have a lot of fun at Hanson Dam, you can go to the car show and then pop over to the Heroes Air Show and see a lot of public safety personnel out. So you're all invited.
Ms. Han.
And if you're still looking for something to do this weekend, come on down to San Pedro at Point Frumon Park for our regular Shakespeare By the Sea performances. Outdoors, you can hear the ocean and watch a wonderful performance by actors. And tonight, I believe it's opening night tonight of Merchant of Venice. So if you've never witnessed Shakespeare By the Sea, please come to Point Frumon Park down in San Pedro. It's free, but I would encourage everyone to dress warm, bring a blanket. We do have benches for people to sit on, but if you want to bring your own chairs and watch it, it's really quite a wonderful performance. The actors are great, and it's really something fun to do. It's every weekend.
I'm still waiting for the Lobster Fest in San Pedro. I know it's pretty soon. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Venice is one of the great, great, great areas in our great city. And this Sunday, there's be an all-day festival on Winward Avenue. And at eight o'clock, I'm gonna pull a switch, and you're gonna see the big Venice sign come back and get lit. And this was the tremendous work of the hundredth anniversary of the Chamber of Commerce, and it will be eight p.m. That is, in the evening. But all day long, there'll be festivals, there'll be music, there'll be booths. The Chamber has taken the leadership. We'd like you all to come to Winward there. We're also, the Robert Graham statue, which has now been put in the circle there near the post office, will also be unveiled. But it'll be a fun day to enjoy yourself, walk the beach, come on over to the festival. And at eight o'clock in the evening, we'll flip the switch. Ted Lieu will be there with me, and the big sign of Venice will be lit up. So come on down to the beach this weekend. It's gonna be a hot weekend. We'd love to have you in Venice. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very well. Any other announcements? I have a couple. The Los Angeles Police Department Central Division, the Central City Police Booster is gonna have their fifth annual Motorcycle Cherry Ride, nine a.m. to eleven a.m. Santa Monica High School. So if you want to bring your motorcycle out and join the Central City Police Boosters, a lot of folks join in that event. It's a nice motorcycle day. And there's a luncheon afterwards with a concert. So we wish them all good will and support our local Central Division, LAPD. Mr. Smith.
Hey, Mr. President. We start our movies in the park tomorrow, Saturday. We started this last year. Holly Burnson Park in Porter Ranch, eight o'clock. It's free to the public. We're showing Shrek Two. It's a great family event for anyone who runs kids out. And In-N-Out Burger will be there with their portable burger stand. And all the money that's generated from sales of hamburgers goes to the YMCA for tomorrow's event.
And, Mr. Smith, I know you've done a lot for the YMCA in that area. You've done a whole lot for them. Any other announcements? No other announcements? Please stand for a journey motion. Journey motions. Mr. Alakon.
Members, I'm very sad to announce a very sudden passing of Pastor Curry McKinney, who was very, very active in the San Fernando Valley and beyond, actually. He founded and served as pastor of the True Spirit Community Church in Simi Valley for thirty years, notwithstanding his presence in Simi Valley. He was extremely active in the San Fernando Valley, having served as the president of the Ministries Fellowship of the San Fernando Valley. He served as, retired out of the L.A. County Sheriff's Department. He was Deputy Sheriff, and also was a mathematics instructor at L.A. Trade Tech. So obviously, Pastor McKinney had touched just about every one of our districts in one way or another with some incredible service. He was a lifetime member of the San Fernando Valley branch and the Ventura County branch of the NAACP. Just a very good advocate for the community and always there to serve the community. And so, very sorry. We want to extend our condolences to his wife of fifty-two years, Barbara. And of course, he devoted his life to their children, Curry Junior, Darren, and Brenda McKinney.
Mr. Cartness.
Thank you very much, Council President. With great sadness, I announce that we will be adjourned in the memory of Gail R. Curry. She passed on on June twelfth at the age of fifty-nine. And Gail was born in San Francisco in nineteen forty-seven. She's the daughter of Betty Jean Hurley and Eugene Collins. She had a fun-loving spirit with a special sense of humor. She cherished her faithful companion, Choo Choo. Gail loved animals, especially elephants. And arrangements are being made to dedicate Gail a memorial plaque in the treetop terrace of the Los Angeles Zoo on November fifth, when she would have celebrated her sixtieth birthday. She will be laid to rest at Forest Lawn in Glendale. Gail Curry will be sorely missed by all who knew her, and she touched many lives. And she's survived by her daughter Mona, her granddaughter Jessie, and sister, and three brothers.
Mr. Labange.
Members, I think we all should stand and adjourn for the nine Charlton, South Carolina firefighters who tragically lost their lives in a fire earlier this week. The names of William Hutchinson, Captain, Captain Mike Benneke, Captain Louis Murkey, Engineer Mark Kelzy, Engineer Bradford Beatty, Assistant Engineer Michael French, Firefighters James Drayton, Firefighters Brandon Thompson, Firefighters Melvin Champagne. The infernal race through a furniture warehouse, collapsing the roof and killing these nine Charlotte, Charleston, excuse me, Charlton firefighters. Most of the bodies were found near the rear of the building where the flames caused the collapse in the challenge of fighting that fire. The fire burned so hot and fast, the shelves collapsed where the majority of the fatalities were found. It's so sad. Anytime we lose a public safety officer anywhere in the country or anywhere in the world, but to lose nine, I know that city is grieving. And I think the proper documentation from our city that we send in adjourn of these memories for all nine of these families that are now left without their loved ones.
What's interesting about the tragic deaths is they rescued some workers, and they thought there were additional workers, and they went back in to rescue additional workers. So it shows the sacrifice that they made to try and save people. May they rest in peace. Mr. Rosendahl.
That mayor of the city this morning very eloquently said that when a fireman puts on his uniform, her uniform, in the morning, one of the things they realize is that they might go into harm's way to save other people's lives, and that these are true heroes.
Absolutely. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Antonio Aguilar. This is presented on behalf of Councilmember Jan Perry. He's an extraordinary Mexican singer who passed away at the age of eighty-eight of pneumonia. A viewing and memorial mass was held Wednesday in the Distrito Federal, the capital of Mexico, in the historic Basilica de Guadalupe, where dignitaries, celebrities, and fans gathered to pay their last respects to an artist considered one of the country's leading cultural ambassadors. Aguilar delighted international audiences for years with wholesome musical rodeo shows of Mexico. His remarkable career spanned over six decades with more than a hundred sixty records and more than a hundred films, often starring as a fearless champion of the poor in dramas with revolutionary themes. Aguilar was a devoted family man, married for more than forty-five years to his wife, singer Flor Silvestre, and father to two boys, Antonio and Pepe. Aguilar's extraordinary career has paved the way for his own son, Pepe Aguilar, who is a successful recording artist in his own right, who'll be missed but never forgotten. Councilmember Perry has been unusually attentive to the culture of Mexico in holding many events, singers around the Coliseum, to gather the community. And it's to her credit that we can acknowledge this great singer. And for many of us who do not know him, he is much like the Frank Sinatra, the Elvis Presley. He has that type of presence. I remember my parents playing his records back in the day, and they'd speak of him with that kind of fondness and memory. So God rest his soul.
Mr. Alakon, you have comments?
I just wanted to add some words on behalf of Councilman Weezer, who was also born in Sacatecas, which is where Antonio Aguilar was from. And he truly is an icon. And Councilman Reyes has captured the greatness of Antonio Aguilar and his entire family for not just being a tremendous entertainer. He is also very respected for being an incredible family person and is a role model in many respects. So I know that Councilman Weezer wanted to introduce the motion next Tuesday. But I do want to say that he would have wanted to contribute his words, particularly since he was born in the same state of Mexico.
Mr. Cartness, comments?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Alakon, for acknowledging the fact that Antonio Aguilar is an extremely incredible human being. He was also known for his philanthropy and his big heart. He wowed crowds for many, many decades where he would have, he would sing on his horse. It was a kind of an interesting concert because he had the interplay between the lifestyle that he loved of growing up on a ranch and having, what you call a charriada, and having it in an arena. And he would sing on his horse, and he would make the horses dance and just wow the crowds like no one else. And I remember, as a little boy, watching those events and looking at my parents and seeing how they felt when they experienced that.